All please, please rise for prayer. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and bringing us here safely to our meeting this evening. If it is your will, we ask that you guide us in making the proper decisions that will benefit our entire village. Help us to work together as a team and to respect others' opinions. Remember our first responders, police and fire personnel that are protecting our community constantly. Please remember our loved ones, relatives, neighbors, friends and shut-ins that are in need of our support. Please show us the way to help those in need and bless everyone by your goodness and consideration. Thanks be to God for all those, for all that that you do for us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, one nation under God, with equal liberty and justice for all. Okay, Michael, go to use the call to roll, please.
Councilman Otten?
Here.
Councilman Bishop?
Here.
Councilman Hershuck?
Here.
Councilman Henry?
Here.
Mayor Junkins?
Here.
Councilman Sessing?
Here.
Recorder Sessing?
Here.
Councilman Snyder?
Here.
Back to me already, okay. Counselors should have before you the minutes of our April twenty, twenty, twenty-one council meeting. I would entertain a motion to... I take it back, that's, that's the nineteenth, the nineteenth council meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
No move.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Is there any question on the motion? If there be no question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. And then we have another set of minutes, which is the April twenty, twenty-one meeting, which we laid the levy. I would also entertain a motion to accept these minutes as presented.
No move.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made. Any question on the motion? If there be no question on the motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried, thank you.
I abstain.
Yes, right, you were at home, Bobby. Higher education, huh?
It was, at this point.
Okay. Next, Matt is your report.
Next council meeting will be held on Monday, May seventeen, twenty twenty-one, at eight P M. It's all I have, nightmare.
Okay, is that it? That's it, okay. There is no accountant's report tonight. We had the financial statement at our last meeting. Start in the, the mayor's report. First, I want to mention that on April twenty, twenty twenty-one Tuesday, the Ohio County Solid Waste Authority conducted their annual spring cleanup. Ohio County Solid Waste Authority provided thirty Q, thirty QBR roll-off containers, plus Republic Surfaces, for something different, had one of their garbage packers on site for the first time. And this was to handle small plastic bags of garbage and things that could go in there easily. Also, the Al Bowen family, Al Bowen is, lives over in Mozart, and his family for years, knew them before I got up here. Always staged his, their pickup truck, and they, they go through and help people unload their vehicles to put them in the dumpster, but if there's any metal, they'll take the metal, and that's their pay for showing up that day. Plus, the Village Street Crew is there to assist anyone that might need the help unloading their vehicle and placing it up into the roll-off containers. They'll, the roll-off containers, when you're looking up at them, it, it takes Charles Atlas, left some of the bags or some of their debris up in there, so they're there, and our backhoe was down there, and a lot of times they'll just, people just toss things in the bucket of the backhoe, and backhoe comes and away they go. The operation was staged at the Village Drive Ballfield parking lot with the hours of operation from eight A M. to two P M., and they took out about five roll-off containers of debris. On April twenty-four, Saturday, the city of Wheeling was hired to operate two of their Pelican street sweepers to sweep up the cinders on our streets and roads that were left over from the winter snow removal. The sweeper started and staged in front of the Bethlehem Fire Department building and proceeded from there. The, the fire department building was approximately in the middle of the village, so they were staged from there and then went different directions. The sweepers were coattailed by the village's two dump trucks, one basically following each other, well, I should say one following each sweeper. We had approximately fifteen small loads of cinders that will be recycled and used next winter for the mixing with the salt. On April twenty-sixth, Monday, we had a sanitary sewer blockage in the sanitary sewer line that serves Green Tree Road, and that's down Green Tree Road behind number thirty-three and forty-one. This was down in the woods. The terrain in that area is unbelievable, just unbelievably steep, loaded with trees of all sizes, vines, a steep valley with a small stream going down through the uneven center. Plenty of leaves and the like. Because of a jungle-like area, the village's rubber tired backhoe was not even considered nor an option. Our good friend and contractor, H P Con, H P Excavating, Kenny Wharton, was contacted. He came and viewed the site, and it would have been a site to put on, put on camera. When I got over there, they were already, they were already in the midst of things. Kenny has, has a, a medium-sized track hoe, and you go down in the backyards, and the guys told me, you don't want to get down over the hill, and after I got down so far, as far as they could go, I understand where they were coming from, because it was like a jungle, and I wished I would have seen how Kenny got his track hoe down there, but I didn't stay long enough, but he drew a crowd when he was taking his backhoe up, out of there. I mean, it, it was, it was a scene to behold and everything. Kenny brought his crews in and a medium-sized track hoe and started to work the project. Kenny meticulously operated his backhoe, replacing the damaged pipeline with five sections of new PVC pipe going into the manhole. The way it was described to me, that we had Robinson come in and try to blow that out, and they couldn't blow it out, so we knew there was something wrong. Well, the line went down this way, and then it dropped so far, and then went this way, and then went, went this way, leveled out again. There was a small concrete block cemented in place. Why that design, I don't know, but that's where the blockage occurred. And just doing an analysis of it, it was easier and probably more economical to replace the sanitary sewer lane with five new sections in. So they got those all in place, and then our guys went down and cemented things up and buttoned up the, the connections. The village supplied the material, and H P Excavating provided the trenching labor. It was determined prior to the start of this project, it would be best to replace this section piping rather than do a Band-Aid type fix. Also, the D E P. was advised the proper protocol and requested we act soon as possible, which we did. Now, that's, that was half of it. Now, it was eight o'clock this morning, we were supposed to get down there and go on Bethlehem Boulevard East, down towards the Grove, and going down there on the left, where this line comes down, it comes down, and I learned something new last week, because there are two outfalls of the city of Wheeling, and I thought there was only one. There's two outfalls. One comes down the boulevard and the roadway and goes into Wheeling's downfall, and the other one comes down from Green Tree. Well, the city of Wheeling, I don't know if they didn't communicate with us, but they brought their vacuum truck up and everything, because they weren't getting any liquid out of our downfall. They thought there was something, a problem in the line. Well, then they got together and so they cleared. But this morning, we were to get down there at eight o'clock, in fact, I lined up an extra policeman for security, because we're going to be working on the road. And anytime we work on Richcrest Water Break or something, or in an area like this, I like safety on both ends. I don't want anybody to get hit, because there's some crazy to come flying up around the bend there, and they can't wait till they get up to the top of the hill. So, but anyway, that fell through because of the rain, so that's been rescheduled for later this week. Going to try to pick out a date that the weather will be, will be compatible with this. And the purpose is, there's evidently some blockage in that line, and that, and Ben wants to get it cleaned out. On April twenty-sixth and twenty-seven, twenty twenty-one, the West Virginia Department of Highways was, was doing some pothole patching along Richcrest Road from the main intersection out to Marshall County. The intersection still needs major work, storm drainage, drainage and paving. If you're ever sitting there at the traffic light and you want to turn west, turn left to go west, and it's raining, there's all kind of dips in there. And if you're sitting there, especially a first or second car, you get a bath. And that's been that way for years. I talked to them about it and said, and I think it was that they didn't want to put in a, a storm drain to take it down over the hill somewhere, but they're going to have to do something sooner or later. Maybe we need to stage an accident or something to get their attention. But anyway, that's something that's been on my hit list, and I still want to get something done. On October, oh, jumping, on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one, I attended an Averta Board Meeting in Wheeling City Council, City County Chambers with some live members, I think there was about seven of us, and the rest of the meeting was a viral meeting. On May one, twenty twenty-one, Saturday afternoon at two P M., the Bethlehem Fire Department broke ground for their new fire station located at twenty-seven Chapel Road. There were many members of the fire department, as well as current and former residents of Bethlehem in attendance. It was nice to see all those in attendance in view of the beautiful sunshine and weather. Details of the groundbreaking and are, they are described in the flyers that I passed around there tonight. On May one, can't be on May one, on June one, June one, twenty twenty-one, Saturday night, I received a phone call from Gary Hamilton of Wheeling and also talked to his wife regarding a community service project, which they scheduled for nine A M. May second, which was Sunday, Sunday morning. They are known as Volunteer Wheeling, this group, and this morning in tonight's paper, there's Community Pride says Community Pride Shines, so there must be maybe as many as a dozen different groups, consortium and everything, and they've been going around and wanting to collect things, clear things up. And when I got that call, I thought, holy cow, we're looking to gift out, gift horse in the mouth here. They cleaned up Bethlehem Boulevard East from the Clark Station, which was formerly the farm fresh, down to hangers on the right side heading towards Elm Grove. They did a super job picking up various discarded junk. The bags were left on the side of the roadway and will be picked up, as I was told that the city of Wheeling will do that. So I followed up on it today, and, and this is what the, the, just loses him here. This is what I was told by the Hamiltons and everything, and, and, in fact, I asked our guys, and they said, yes, they did. There was about four or five different, I mean, they had stacked, things stacked up. And when I talked to them on Saturday night and said something, you're going to, you're going to start at the farm first, no, we're just, I thought they were going to just clean around the char house down there. Well, they went up there at the top and they started down, because between the top there were the, of the intersection and down to the char house, that was the worst area. And I think, I've seen things before, and I'm going to talk to the loading zone, to Chuck, Chuck Sherry, that's, he's the owner of that. They put their dumpster out in the...
Here, here.
Bobby?
I said, here, here, I'm rooting you on, that is a, they're about to make a great comment.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you what.
Hundreds of, of signs litter that roadway.
Yes.
Blow off of their parking lots.
Well, the parking lot...
Cigarettes, two for five dollars or whatever, they all just lay in the road.
Oh, that's where you buy your cigarettes, though, okay.
It's a joke.
No, it is, but I think one of the things, wind always comes in for the west most of the time, and I don't know what type of dumpster they have up there, but it seems to me, the lids are this way, the wind comes in and empties it out, and besides that, if there's any food in there, the crows get it.
Yeah, apparently the hole isn't big enough in the dumpster, because they can't fit stuff in there.
Well, I think maybe they need a bigger dumpster.
Yeah.
So, but anyway, that's, that's one of my pet peeves, but when in talking to the Hamiltons, because I called them up Sunday evening, and anyway, let me, I'm getting, I'm getting away from my script here. The bags left on the side roadway be picked up outside still by the city of Wheeling, which they did today. I also provided police protection while this group worked. That was one of the things that they were concerned about, and whenever you're working on the highway to hell there, the way people drive and everything, and Russ went out, he was down there and monitored them, and he even commented to me, because I followed up with him, and told me what a good job that they did, so. But anyway, when I talked to them on Sunday night, they told me that they wanted to finish the east side, in other words, from hangers on down further towards the Grove. But then they also want to come back and do the right side down, and that's going to, that's going to be scheduled yet this month, they're going to tell me. And then also, they want to go Bethlehem Boulevard West and get that cleaned up for us. Each time, I'm going to provide, I'm going to provide police protection for them when they're working on these roads. That's at least what you can do. But then I got to talk to the daughter too, because I talked to the mother and the daughter, and I talked to Gary too, and Gary, like I was talking to Mark before the meeting. Gary lives on, he lives somewhere out here in Ohio County, and he has an address of Cabin, Cabin, I don't know where it is, but anyway, he had a brother, and I forgot that his brother passed away. His brother worked for the post office and retired here and passed away the year ago February. He lived on Village Drive, and that's why Mark doing, he was one of Mark's neighbor. But I found that out from him, you know, and I wasn't aware that he was, but anyway, they did, did a super job, and I just, I couldn't praise him enough, and told him, and they appreciated the comments, and I mean, I, I called a spade a spade, and it was, it was due. So, anyway. Basically, the, they want to complete this, as I say, the rest of the month here. The month of April was spent a very busy month, it seems like because of the good weather that we've experienced, appears that people can't work fast enough now, getting more calls at the office, want this, want this and that. And between Ben and I, between the two lists we have, we still probably have pretty close to fifty lists, fifty different items on our list. Now, one of the things that interferes, things crop up during the day that you have to address. We had to finish reading some of the meters, and I can't wait till that new program gets into place that'll free them up for more of these, these, these honeydew projects that I have, so to speak, that we have to address. So, that just basically completes my report here. Other officers are reports. T C., you have anything at this time?
No, I do not.
Okay. The police chief report, I passed that around tonight. Russ, he's pretty good about getting into us, but I was, I couldn't make the, in the council box, my, my mate there, Matt, he was away, so I substituted for him. I would have liked to add it in there, but it saves us postage when we give it to you when you're here, so. Anyway. Aaron, start with you.
I got a couple things tonight.
Good.
The first thing is, Aaron has requested to be approved for the second grant. We would put away ten thousand dollars for this grant, it's going to be the same principal as the last one. The budgeted funds in the current Parks and, Parks and Rec Fund, it'll be twenty percent of the second grant, and our Park Fund will cover the original grant twenty percent. We recently bought the three additional picnic tables for the shelter, they're being painted and waterproofed through the week, and we are very much booked with shelters starting April twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth. We're booked up until September, and then even in September, we only have a few Sundays open. So as long as there's no cancellations, it looks like a very good year for the Parks Fund, so we're looking forward to that. And the signs, I mean, obviously, we'll have the steak fry signs going up time, when the time comes. Other than that, the only thing I have is I know council got the fifty-fifty raffle tickets, we're looking to sell as many of those as we can. Currently, this was as of April thirtieth, we're at a four hundred, four hundred split. So we're already, we're already working our way up, but we want to get the rest of those tickets out. And then the only other thing is steak fry tickets are available now, and we're trying to get as many of those out as well. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you, Aaron. You mentioned about the sign, she said something to me today, she wanted to know if it was okay to start getting them out, and I said, go, you know, go for it.
Absolutely, man.
Yeah.
Just start advertising for sure.
Pays the advertise, okay. Bobby, you have anything on the police?
No.
Roads and streets. Tommy and Steve?
No, I have nothing tonight.
Yeah, the only thing I can tell you, I have the engineer working on the specs for the three, for the proposed three streets we wanted to, and I want to get those back. Jack's pretty busy down there, and, because I, I usually call him every day, I didn't bother him today, because Jack Shellhays should be back in the office to help him out. But anyway, I want to get the, get that, as soon as we get the specs and everything, I want to get it, add, float it and get it out so that we can get some prices back, because I've noticed in the legal ads that Ohio County Schools, they're doing parking lots around their schools and things like that, and there's a few minor projects that the state's doing, but that doesn't, oh, replacement of a bridge and somewhere they're doing some asphalting, but I want to get that out early so that we can get a contract awarded and get on their work list so that they can do it when we want them to do it, so.
I got one thing on streets and roads. I'm sorry.
What's that?
That will be fine, thank you.
Oh, okay, okay, I don't mean to steal your report time, but that's something you didn't know.
Bobby's there.
If you guys could look at Hamilton, I mean, Hamilton, gee, sorry about that walnut, where they did the water project, a lot of that has settled. And I, I'm, it's like a half inch to an inch, it's probably not deep enough, but almost anywhere where they cross the, the road walnut, it is settled.
Yeah, well, that's, that's...
Almost the whole length.
The walnut is one of the ones on the, on the list of, maybe you didn't remember.
Start, yeah. I know Sugar Maple's going to be a big project when he finally get done.
Yeah, well, I would hope that we'll be within budget there, and I'm wanting to get a little more details on the American Rescue Plan, because I hope we can do roads, because we got roads to pave and seal. So I hope that will qualify and that, we're not, we're going to get some more information sometime this month, but the only thing that they've told us, you know, water, sewer and broadband. Well, broadband doesn't really, we're not really that interested in this here, but with water and sewer, yes, so.
Bobby, we can always go with hot patches open now.
Yeah, I don't think the other holes are that deep, it's...
Yeah, okay, it's, it's...
But you can see it's, it's settling, here a little there.
Right, as time goes by, we can get some hot patch to hold it over through the summer so they don't have to, you know...
Yeah, I forgot to ask him, I think, I think that the, the hot batch, hot patch is available, because I think we went down and got some and did some pothole patching last week, so. I forgot to ask Ben that today, I ran out of time with him, so, but anyway, no, that's up and down there, we're going to, we got another project down there that, there's a neighbor down there, he's not happy with me, because he started out about a year ago, and we did some work there, but in the wintertime, we can't work with a rubber tired backhoe down there, and it's, it's replacing a culver down there, on the top, top side after you get on the loop of the bend and everything. So what I'm thinking of doing, I'm going to get together with Ben tomorrow, is maybe get our handyman Kenny Wharton and get him to bring in a track, his, one of his small track hoes, and get that put in and get it taken care of, because there's an old piece of steel culver pipe that's still down there, it's a yard ornament now, that we took out last year. But we could, we went so far with the rubber tar backhoe before, we didn't want any accidents, you know, that's the advantage of a, a track hoe. I don't know that we really need a track hoe, but I kind of like the idea that we can call him on Kenny, because he does that work all the time, and he's, he's polished what he does, but you should have seen him down there with a hoe down there over the hill from Green Tree, it was just, I couldn't imagine what I saw, but you could already see him because of all the trees and everything, so I get carried away, but that's, okay. No more on roads and streets, right, Tommy and Steve?
No, no, that walnut doesn't eat done, Bobby, we do know that, that's, they can't come in on that, you're talking about where that trap was going, they can't come in on that lower side of that, huh, on walnut?
Well, they, you're bringing it on his tractor, or you on his tractor?
I mean, with the regular hoe, it'd be the second house down on, we were talking about.
Yeah.
Was you down there with me?
Yeah, second house on the right, going down.
Fairly level, that's close to his road.
I mean, the, the train in his yard is almost...
Yeah, it is behind that first house, I didn't know if you could come in from the bottom though, and finish what you was, I know where you ended up there, but...
Yeah, well, we'll, we're going to try to work something out on that, but try to satisfy the neighbors, I like to take care of them, things are just, you know, adding up fast. Water, Tim, anything on water, any questions?
Yes, directed at the last meeting I met with Jamie to talk about the radio read and what we had spent. We had only spent the one oh five from the Ohio County Commission, so we do still have an outstanding balance of forty-two, seven twenty-four that we'll wait for the CARES Act funding to come in, so.
We've hit a few bills from them for a handful meters.
Yeah, but we did not, we did not spend the entirety of the bid, so the money hadn't come out of the fund, so I met with Jamie about that last week, that's all I got.
Okay, very good.
So what's the remaining balance, forty-two, one?
Uh, I believe it's as, when I met with Jamie last week, it was forty-two thousand, seven hundred, twenty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Yeah, that was that last invoice, that was like, was it, did you say four twenty-seven point twenty-four?
No, forty-two thousand.
Oh, forty-two thousand, okay, okay. Okay, Mark, anything on zoning?
Nothing this evening.
Okay. And Ben's not here to, to report on things, he's, I give him hand notes every day on something, you know, he's, he's got a schedule back there, things he wants to do, and we go over, basically go on a day, day-to-day basis, what he wants to do, and today it messed him up because of the weather, and he couldn't get that done down on the boulevard that we intended to do, so. Okay. Is there anything to come up under old business tonight?
Well, Mayor, I have tonight. I have tonight the letter which I have prepared to the West Virginia Ethics Commission, and I have the documents which are to be submitted with it regarding the issues.
Okay.
As requested by the Ethics Commission. The document's eighteen pages plus exhibits, the letter is three or four pages. At the proper time, we'll need to distribute these and pass them out to everybody, because I'm going to collect them all back up tonight before I leave.
Okay, we do this under new business, under new business, and then we need to go into executive session to discuss this?
Whatever you want to do.
Okay, let's, let's do that. There's, okay, is, are you, is that it for old business?
Yeah.
Anything, any other old business? How about anything under new business? Okay. At this time, I'm requesting that council move into executive session based on the provisions of the West Virginia Open Governmental Proceedings Act of West Virginia, Code, Chapter Six, Article Nine A, Section Four, in order to consider matters involving attorney-client privileged matters. So I would entertain a motion to move into executive session.
So, second, second, Tommy, Mark, Tommy.
So, second, Tony, Mark, Tommy.
Okay, all those, you got that, Matt, okay, motions?
We made the matter, so let's keep talking.
Mark.
Mark.
Okay, all those in favor, then the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? No, she carried. Okay.